Well, good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Wednesday, August 3rd, 2016. If you would join us for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When you're ready, if you could please roll the roll.
Councilmember Clint?
Here.
Councilmember Manning?
Here.
Councilmember Demmer?
Councilmember Geisler?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Wells?
Here.
Mayor Cook?
Here.
One absent, Demmer.
Thank you. First item on our agenda this evening is to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Manning, second by Clint, to adopt the agenda. And Councilmember Manning, did that?
Yeah, I would include one addendum on the consent agenda. And that is an addition, not replacement?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's your second? Motion by Manning, second by Clint. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted with the addendum. We don't have any proclamations or presentations tonight, so the next thing on our agenda would be the July 19th minutes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Johnson, to approve the city council meetings minutes from July 19th, 2016. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. All right, we now have four items on our consent agenda. The first item on our consent agenda is to approve a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for strong beer and wine for the American Legion Post #334 for their annual member picnic on August 16th, I'm sorry, August 6th, 2016. And, yeah, all right. Second item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 16-81, amending the budget for the recycling center to allow the purchase of two paper shredders. Currently, the recycling center hosts monthly paper shredding events. These have become increasingly popular and are one of the most widely attended programs at the facility. With the success of this program, the facility is experiencing increasing logistical issues of particular concern is the increased traffic congestion along adjacent local streets and significant delays. Staff is concerned that these issues will only continue to grow, or worse yet, people will use the facility less frequently due to these inconveniences. Mr. Hammer, do you want me to read this discussion point, or do you want to kind of talk about it? Because I actually do have a question, and not enough of a question to remove it from the consent agenda, but I do have a question about this.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, briefly, it is, we're looking to make that an option for people to do during regular hours. Come on in and do your own shredding at the facility. We'll continue to hold those monthly for the larger scale volumes, but it's our hope that by spreading it out over the course of the regular business hours that we can do away with those larger type events.
The larger traffic backing up events, or just bringing the truck in at all?
Well, bringing the truck in at all is what causes that. People know that during this one time during the month, I'm going to go and do that, so everyone stocks up. And some people come with boxes, and some people come with a little bag. And those that come with a little bag don't want to wait in 30 cars, so they come up to the front and just want to throw it in. Well, they're not allowed to do that, so it's caused a lot of issues. So if we're able to spread it out and make sure that those are being taken care of during the regular business hours, then we could potentially get away from bringing the truck in at all. And that's really what the hope is, that if we can spread it out and do it more frequently, that we won't need that event, and then the dollars will cancel each other out.
Okay. It just seems like when I've been up there, it's, you know, people with one or two banker boxes and the bags, and I can't see them going in and sitting with that shredder and feeding in 20 or 30 pages at a time, and then going, "It's full," and, you know, it didn't seem like these would replace the truck.
That's why we wanted to just try them both ways. Keep the truck going, do this, and if the events for the trucks continue to get less and less and less, then we probably would consider discontinuing it. But we're going to continue down the dual track for now.
And the funding for this is coming from the Anoka County SCORE grant?
Correct.
And is this additional funds for these shredders, or is this money that will be, maybe would have used somewhere else later?
These were dollars that kind of get added at the end, and it's really convoluted, and Colleen could explain it to you much better than I. But there are always dollars that are in the budget for different types of events or different -- I think last year we got a portable pallet jack, or, so it's one of those, the money's available, yes, we want to use it for the shredders, which means we wouldn't use it for something else, but right now that something else hasn't really been identified.
Because we've already bought the Styrofoam baler and everything else.
Correct.
Councilman?
But it appears that that eventually will pay for itself, the two shredders.
Yeah, not only with the cell of the paper shredding, but also by potentially discontinuing or doing it less frequently with the truck event.
Yeah, maybe we could even do that once a year or something for tax season, when somebody goes through and purges all that old stuff or something.
I think the people that come with a small grocery bag or something like that could do that during regular business hours. It's those that would come with, you know, a couple of banker's boxes or something larger. Even businesses that do that would probably want to come during the larger event, and that just spreads the people out.
If we could get the word out to the presidential candidates, maybe we could make it all back all at once.
I'm not sure what that means. All right.
They might have some things they want to shred.
Bring all your political literacy.
All right, well, thank you. So the various price quotes were obtained, and the lowest is from Clary Business Machines LLC at $3,580 each, with an electrical cost of $500 to bring power to the location for a grand total of $7,660. Clary Business Machines is also a local company, in St. Paul, I think, isn't it, or something? Making installation and servicing easier for staff, these shredders will handle larger quantities of paper than other options available and are simple and safe for residents to operate. So we are looking at approving Resolution 16-81, amending the recycling budget for the purchase of two paper shredders. The next item on our consent agenda is to approve a special assessment and waiver agreement with Anoka Hennepin School District 11, and this is for the installation of water and sewer utilities to serve the proposed maintenance facility at 11301 Dogwood Street. And the agreement provides that the district gives permission for city staff and the project contractor to perform installations in conjunction with approved project plans and specifications for City Project 16-4. So this is going to allow the city council to approve and execute the special assessment and waiver agreement with Anoka Hennepin School District 11 to complete the required improvements under City Project 16-4. And the last item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 16-83. On June 7th, council adopted an ordinance establishing the Creek Meadows Two Owners Association Housing Improvement Area. The costs of the improvements have now been determined, and the city council is asked to set a hearing date so those costs can be collected from the property owners in the same manner as a special assessment. So in June, the council established a housing improvement area for the 44 units in the Creek Meadows Two Owners Association, and the improvements include new siding, gutters, windows, doors, concrete aprons, sidewalks, landscaping, remove and replace curb and gutters, and prep all driveways for paving. The costs of the improvements have now been determined. The next step in the process is to adopt a resolution to collect the improvement fees from the owners of the units. A hearing is necessary before that resolution can be adopted, and the hearing would be set for September 6th, 2016, and that must be our first council meeting in September, then I'll bet. So with this motion, we would also be adopting Resolution 16-83, setting the hearing on the establishment of improvement fees for the Creek Meadows Two Owners Association Housing Improvement Area for Tuesday, September 6th, 2016, at 7:00 PM in the Grand Rapids City Council chambers. And that should be everything on the consent agenda.
Move consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Clint, to adopt the consent agenda. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. We don't have any public hearings, bid, opening contracts, old business under new business. We are looking at consider Resolution 16-84, accepting a donation from Coon Rapids Athletic Association for construction labor at Sand Creek Park, and approve the agreement. And I think, Mr. Hammer, do you want to just kind of hit the bullet points here?
Sure thing, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, we were approached by the Coon Rapids Athletic Association to, they were interested in constructing a storage shed on the site. They have some seasonal equipment that they'd like to place out there. With the cost of the maintenance building the city was going to build for our mowers and equipment, it got rather expensive under the building project. So we had a few conversations about them maintaining consistency with what we're building, so they basically want to take our set of plans and our specifications and build the structure for themselves, which basically is a donation to us, because they feel they're only going to need about half of that. So they will be building, the city would be providing the materials, we would buy the materials, provide them to them, they would then have to come in and pull all appropriate permits and build it to the plans and specifications that our architect provided. So I think that touches on the high points, and I'm certainly willing to answer any questions.
Do we have any liability issues with them doing the work?
That's all part of what's in the agreement drafted by Mr. Brody.
You have to carry the insurance that we normally require from somebody that would be contracting with us to do work.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Manning?
I move adoption of Resolution 16-84, accepting a donation from Coon Rapids Athletic Association for all labor necessary to construct the city maintenance garage and storage garage at Sand Creek Park and to authorize mayor and city manager to execute the agreement with Coon Rapids Athletic Association for construction and use of the city's maintenance garage and storage garage at Sand Creek Park.
I'll second that.
Motion by Manning, second by Johnson. Discussion? Well, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item six on our agenda is to consider approval of an alternative exterior material for the Anoka County Gun Range Storage Building, 13299 Hanson Boulevard. I don't know what Crew 2 means, but, so, right now, they have a building back there by the gun range, and they want to build another building, and the building that's there, the materials were okay in 2013, but they're no longer approved, or, so, we're looking at making an allowance for them to use the same materials as on their original building, right? So, do we need any more detail than that, or does that cover it?
Your Honor.
Councilman Johnson?
I believe this is, yeah, planning case 16-14. I move that we approve the planning commission's recommendation that the city council allow the alternative metal siding, because it would be consistent with the existing building, and it would also be consistent with the building that Coon Rapids built, so, they're just looking to make it match.
Motion by Johnson, second by Clint. It sends to me. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item seven is to consider adoption of Ordinance 2173, and this is an ordinance opting out of the state temporary health care dwellings statute. In this past legislative session, the Minnesota Legislature passed, and the governor signed a law that would institute a permitting process for so-called temporary family health care dwellings in residential districts, or they call them granny pods. Well, they do. Instead of using the state's permitting process, counties and municipalities may opt out of the law by passing an ordinance as part of its zoning provisions, but because the law becomes effective September 1st, the opt-out ordinance would need to be in place before that date, or the city would otherwise have to process permit applications made on or after September 1st until the effective date of the new ordinance. So, basically, the state passed a law that encompassed everybody, and it's up to us to opt out if we want to make our own decisions locally about whether to allow these or not.
Maybe we could tell this is granny's that need going on.
Well, so they started messaging me from the legislature, wondering what I thought about it, and that literally that was the type, that's the legislation, it's called for granny pods. I'm going, "Well, okay, well, get past that, and let's just give them their opinions."
Okay, Your Honor, I would move the recommendation of the planning commission that we approve Ordinance 2173, opting out of the requirements.
Second.
Motion by Clint, second by Manning, and that's opting out of the requirements of Minnesota Statute Section 462-3593. Mr. Brody?
Your Honor, I just wanted to point out one thing, and it is in the ordinance itself, that we're adopting this on an emergency basis. Given that timeline we just described, that this ordinance, if we were going through our normal process, wouldn't be in effect until sometime after September 1st. So there are some findings within the ordinance that we feel it meets the conditions for enacting it under emergency under our charter, and thus it will become effective as soon as it's adopted. I just want to point that out, so that we're aware, because we don't often get to do an emergency ordinance.
Okay, so is there anything that you would like read into the record? Did that just cover it?
I think that covered it, and it's covered within the ordinance itself. So by adopting it, I presume that you're making those findings.
Okay, excellent. Any other discussion?
Your Honor, as a side, you and Clifford, we need a five-volt on this, right?
Thank you, that is correct. Thank you for reading the memo.
Way to bring that sage wisdom.
It does require a five-volt, because it is an emergency under our charter. Thank you.
All right, so hearing no other discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, and that motion carries.
With a supermajority.
Item eight is to consider introduction of an ordinance allowing an amendment to the administrative citation ordinance, and this deals with currently the requests submitted, if you are issued, if one of the residents has issued an administrative citation ordinance, currently the request submitted for up to a 30-day extension can be granted immediately by the inspector who issued the citation, but if it needs to be anything longer than that, it has to go through a process. And we are looking at amending this so that the inspectors, in a less onerous fashion, can extend the time to up to 90 days. Correct? Is there any questions?
I do. And Kristen's not here, so is somebody able to answer my questions?
Mr. Mayor, I can attempt to.
Yeah. This is very troublesome to me, especially in light of the fact that, right now, in our neighborhood, we have called, like, weekly for the last four years on a house that continues to get inspectors coming out, they continue to, they must be giving them extensions, because nothing's being done, and then it takes forever to get something done. Is there a point at which we now have in the ordinance where, after so many calls, after so many years, something more is done than just a little slap on the wrist that they could put, you know, add on to their tax burden later on, or not have to pay until they sell the house?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Clint, I don't know the particulars of that property that you're referencing, I certainly would be happy to follow up and, I guess, find out what the history is of that particular property. You know, I don't know the circumstances in terms of why it's taken so long. This particular issue is really intended to address the time extension appeals that we receive. Last year, I think we had under 20, this year we've been at almost 30 time extension requests. Anything beyond 30 days has to go through a fairly, I don't want to call it a complicated process, but we have to prepare information for the hearing officer, it takes time to do that, and typically, the hearing officer often grants the time extension up to 90 days anyway. So in this case, it kind of cuts through that process and gives the inspector that discretion to grant that additional time. So, really, I think it's intend, this is intended to address more of the ordinary kind of circumstances that we run into in terms of time extensions, but I don't think it would address the situation that you're necessarily talking about.
So, what I'm hearing you say is, there's two different situations going on. As far as tonight, it's just to continue an extension, letting the inspectors do it. But if the bigger problem is having an extension at all, when the premise of these ordinances is to get it cleaned up quickly, we have to do something else at a later time to address that.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Manning?
Didn't we just change our ordinance requiring that from the start to the finish, on the exterior of the presence is one year, right? Or is that six months and a year on the inside? It's one or the other.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Manning? Correct. That's a different issue, that's, I believe, under the building code, that has to do with exterior improvements. So that's kind of a different section of code, a different, yeah, different.
I thought you were talking about--
Really different issue.
This would be like for weeds and junk and things like that?
This would typically be for exterior storage in vehicles, so anything that's more of an emergency nature, hazardous kind of condition, long weeds, grass, that would not be part of, that would not be something that we would grant a time extension to for longer than 30 days. So we're talking about situations that we come across where someone, there may be a set of circumstances where somebody can't comply within 30 days, but they can do it within a different timeframe, and right now, we have to go through a fairly cumbersome administrative process in order to make that determination. We're really not changing our policy, we're just kind of shifting the responsibility for who gets to make that decision.
But give me an example of what this would cover, then?
Well, it might cover a situation in which somebody needs extra time to get rid of some exterior storage.
So junk?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so it's junk and weeds and crap that's in the yards? That right now, we have an ordinance that we want to get rid of, but now we're giving them an extension to even keep it there longer?
Well, we run into situations where there may be a vehicle, where they may need a little bit of time to get tabs, if that's the particular issue, or they need to get rid of that particular vehicle.
Councilmember, can I just, Mr. Stemwell or Mr. Brody, both have hands up over there.
Because they know I'm mailing them.
Mayor and Councilmember Clint, councilmembers, in some respects, allowing the discretion for extension at a staff level will expedite the process, rather than having to go through a more lengthy appeal process, at which point that extension could occur at that point, we're sort of doing it more immediately, saying, "Okay, you have extraordinary circumstance here." We've had some examples that have gone to council even in recent time, think about, you know, that semi-truck box trailer, where there's just not logistically a way to maybe have it removed, cleaned out, in a short timeframe, where we then at staff could say, "Well, we'll give you 60 days to do that," rather than 30, and not have to go through to that next step of the appeal process in order to have that extension put on. So in some respects, it could shorten that timeline, and it is really just sort of displacing within the administrative portion of that timeline where these extensions could happen. Now they could happen sooner on the front end, rather than waiting to go through the appeal process, which in itself kind of causes a lot of issues. Back to your earlier question about, you know, to the extent that habitual violators, you know, what's a repercussion there? In those cases, you know, they wouldn't be given the discretion to say, "Well, you know, this is the fifth time we've been out here for junk." Also, if you look at our citations, the way in abatement process, to the extent that those penalties double often, there's some pretty substantial financial penalties for someone who just ignores it, and those things you would see when those get certified to someone's property taxes, sometimes they're in the thousands of dollars for failure to remove junk or debris that later we come to abate, but they've been cited several times, sometimes those double, then there's the cost of the abatement, so the financial aspect of that can be pretty serious for those folks that simply don't comply.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Johnson? So, the way I look at this is that this provides staff with extra discretion to administer these things, but what was important for me to hear from both Mr. Stemwell and also from Mr. Frenelius is that that's not necessarily a change of the internal policies on how to administer these things. I actually think it encourages compliance, rather than encourages a contested appeal and then bringing it before the council, if the issue is really one of timing, so I'm fully in supportive of this change.
Yeah, you know, when you first read it, you go, "Ah," but then you see, actually, it's going to be a major staff saving, or time saver for staff, because if it's, if somebody appeals it, the staff has to put together everything for that appeal, when I just as soon see them out in the field yet, you know, working.
In a situation where it's all in a matter of timing, often.
Yeah.
I guess I'd like to just, the rest of the council, to ask that we revisit this whole ordinance, because it's just so frustrating to me, I've gotten so many complaints lately about, you know, the look of the city. I mean, you drive through it, and there's just so much junk around, and if the point is to get rid of it, why aren't we abating it sooner? If we're just putting it on their taxes for, they don't have to, they feel no financial burden till after they sell the house. I mean, there's nothing for them to sit there and make them feel bad about not doing it.
Well, if it's put to their taxes, they have to pay those.
They'll fill it the next year.
Yeah.
But they can't-- It's not deferred, it's put on their taxes, it's not deferred, so-- It's not deferred. I mean, depending on timing, it may take a little while to get there, but once it gets on their taxes, it's payable, it gets spread out over a certain amount of years. The following year, they would have to pay. Yeah. And then it's spread out over a certain amount of years, and there's interest on it, I mean, Jen can give you all the gory details, but yeah, they'll start paying right away on it.
I mean, the exception is if you've got somebody that's going to go into foreclosure or something, where they've just quit paying, then it's really hard to motivate them anyway, but eventually, the bank is going to take that back over again.
It's just hard with, and I think our inspectors and everyone does a great job, but if they don't live here, and they don't have to put up with seeing it all the time, it's easier for somebody to give an extension, because all they feel sorry for is because they're hearing the sob story of what happened, and why they can't, where they don't know the neighborhood, they don't know how many problems the neighborhoods have had, how, you know, it isn't really a sob story, and they grant the extensions, and then the rest of the neighborhood has to sit there and look at all this stuff.
So this is an introduction, and that's, is there a second opinion that they would ever want to get? Like, if somebody said, "Oh, I need 90 days to get this crap out of my front yard," rather than saying, "Well, that seems reasonable, if it's really an eyesore of the neighborhood, would you ever consider maybe bouncing it off the council member for that order or something?" Or, I mean, would there ever be a second opinion? I'm just, you know, rather than it be completely subjective and up to the inspector and how he's feeling that day. Mr. Frenelius?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so typically, the way the process works right now is, once a citation is issued, the, you know, there's a compliance date. If there's a request from the person who receives the citation for a time extension, have to fill out a form, that then results in what I was describing earlier, where there's background information that has to be prepared by the inspection staff, the file then has to be reviewed by the hearing officer. So there's a conversation that's going on right now, and typically, on these time extension requests, there are conversations going on between inspection staff, between supervisory staff, so that people are kind of talking about, what are the facts, what are the circumstances? You know, is this the first time we've received this type of request? Is this more of a, you know, habitual request, that we've had a history of problems and time doesn't seem to be the issue? So, you know, a lot of it is based on the particular facts and circumstances that we're dealing with. So, you know, what obviously we're trying to avoid is being arbitrary about, you know, granting a time request in one situation, but not in another. So there's a lot of communication that goes on back and forth. This is really intended, as Mr. Stemwell mentioned, to sort of streamline that process. By giving that discretion to the inspection staff, we hope that we can actually speed things up, as opposed to slow things down, so.
Okay, well, this is just an introduction, so unless somebody has any other questions, we'll consider this introduced. this introduced. And nine on our agenda. It's Consider Resolution 16-85, a resolution of support for Coon Creek Watershed Headquarters Project. And for several months, the Coon Creek Watershed District has been evaluating options for a new headquarters location. The organization's administrative offices are currently located in Blaine, and its board meetings are held at the Bunker Hills Activity Center in Andover. Earlier this year, they approached the city staff, Coon Rapids staff, about potential locations in Coon Rapids. While several sites were discussed, the conversation mostly focused on the land around the clay hole in Alphlin Park. Coon Creek Watershed District likes the location due to its proximity to Coon Creek. Their current lease expires in October of 2017, and the district needs to move fairly quickly to get the project started this fall. On June 28th, the city council and representatives from the Coon Creek Watershed District met in a work session to discuss the project. The general consensus of the council was to continue to the discussions and gather additional information. Since that meeting, they have hired a design-build contractor to assist them with the concept plans and other tasks. And the district is prepared to spend additional funds on architectural designs, but is requesting a commitment from the city on site location and project cooperation. Several different ideas were discussed, and the attached resolution was acceptable to the Coon Creek Watershed District. And the resolution expresses support for the project and directs staff to continue the discussions, but reserves final right of approval with the city council. However, it does not create any binding obligation of the city to approve a project. And then in terms of next steps, the staff anticipates that Coon Creek Watershed District will have a site plan and building elevations prepared in the next month or so. In addition, we expect to outline the key business terms for a potential land lease. The goal would be to present a more formal project package for council consideration sometime in late August or early September. There. What did you say?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 16-85 supporting the proposed development and new headquarter building for Coon Creek Watershed District.
Motion by Geisler, second by Manning. Discussion.
I think it would be a great addition to the park.
All right, that was it. All in favor, send by by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Perfect.
And that is the last item on our meeting agenda. We are up to open mic. Is anybody here to speak at tonight at open mic? All right. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Should you wish to participate in open mic, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the council. And then all remarks will be made from the podium and addressed to the council at a whole. And it's not a time for problem solving or reacting to the comments, but for hearing the speaker for informational purposes only. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Bob Cron. I live at 12140 Ilex Street Northwest. I've been a Coon Rapids resident for almost 31 years. I actually have a concern about the property that's kitty-cornered from me at 12097 Ilex Street Northwest. About a year and a half ago, the residents apparently were foreclosed on. The house was remodeled, and at the last minute was apparently leased by the state to be converted to a group home. I contacted Mr. Frenelius by email, and he investigated it for me, found out that it was licensed by the state. Close to the end of July, they moved one resident in who is guarded, or whatever you want to call it, by either three or four people 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I talked to the supervisor of the house, and they said that was because he has some violent tendencies. This is a 17 or 18-year-old. And from what I've seen so far in a little over a month and a half, and I was gone on vacation for two weeks, I've seen the police, ambulance, and fire trucks there on four occasions. The latest was this morning. The guy kicked the door out of the front of the house and came running out of the house when I was in my front yard with my 20-month-old granddaughter. This is a violent person that is able to get out of this house at least three times totally out of the house that I'm aware of. And the police and fire department and the paramedics arrived. The people on the staff there did a good job of corralling this person, only because he made a wrong turn when he came out of the house. If he came straight out and kept going, he would have been coming right at me and my granddaughter. I'm very concerned that having a violent person of this nature in the neighborhood is a big cause for concern. I have three grandchildren, and I got another one coming in two weeks. They're at my house a lot. I do not want to fear that they're going to be attacked by someone like this. I don't know what his potential for attacking small children is, but apparently, this is controlled by the state. I spoke to one of the police officers this morning, who was very helpful, very informative. He also told me he would not want to live where I live right now. I talked to the guy that's the head of the house. He says, I can't do anything about it. You have to call my boss. I called his boss. He says, I can't do anything about it. You have to call my boss. So rather than get the phone number of his boss, I said, you go up the chain as far as you need to. You give me the phone number of the person that can do something about this at the state and get me that phone number. He said he would do that. That was at 10 o'clock this morning. I've not heard from him since. So I don't know if city council can do anything to push the state on this, but if this person has violent tendencies and they can't keep him in the house, he should be locked up. He should not be in a residential area with children and families in the area. Thanks for listening.
Thanks, Mr. Cron.
I do have a question, I think.
Oh, Mr. Cron.
No, you won't be able to answer this.
Oh, you won't? Never mind. You won't be able to answer this question anyway, I guess.
One other thing I did want to throw in there, I just thought, none of the neighbors were informed that this was going on. We all found out, it was taken by surprise. When I spoke to the officer this morning, he said the police department found out when they got the first 911 call. So apparently, the state kept this very hush-hush. And I don't know if council can do anything to push something forward on this or not, but I sure appreciate that.
Thanks, Mr. Cron.
Well, I just... Just so surprising, the city doesn't have any rights when it comes to something like this, and the state doesn't have to inform anybody, not even city officials, of this?
Don't we have to issue permit for the house or licensing for that kind of thing?
Not for group homes, right?
No.
But this sounds like they are not using this as we would typically expect a group home to be used. So, all right.
I guess that would be for staff to find out for us. The state does have control over these homes, obviously, but I'm thinking this person doesn't fit the criteria for that. Or it should be...
Yep. Yep. And I was asked about that last night, the night-to-night, that particular one.
So was I.
All right. Anybody else here for open mic this evening?
Good evening. My name is Diane Marshall, and I live at 10170 Winter Green Street Northwest, which is Creekside Estates. I'm the founder of the Creekside Estate Resident Association, and I'm also the spokesperson. We've been wanting our sheds fixed for a long, long time. Our park is in... It's just dilapidating everything, the streets, our sheds, sidewalks. It's horrible. We've put in our request repair sheets to the manager, and we were told, well, for a long time, we were told that it was in litigation with the city. And now we're told... We just got a letter saying, unfortunately, we are still in negotiations with the city of Coon Rapids as to repairs of our sheds. But then it says, the settled lawsuit had no bearing on the work to be done on the sheds. But we were told they were in litigation, and we just want to know what's going... Why we can't get our sheds fixed? And when they can be fixed? Or we're talking about putting rent and escrow to force them to fix our sheds. We're getting violation notices for things outside of our sheds, but we can't put them in our sheds. And you can't bring a snow blower... I suppose you could bring a snow blower into the house, but it's... I mean, it's, you know, it's ridiculous. It's... And we just want to know... We just want a straight answer. That's all. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have everything you need to respond to her, then?
We do.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. I'm with the issue.
Anybody else here for open mic? All right, we'll close that portion of the meeting, and we are up to other business.
Mayor Cook and councilmembers, I didn't write a report under previous open mics, but I did want to let the council know that staff did meet with Ms. Perna earlier this week to discuss her railroad safety issues. And they had a number of concerns they wanted to share with us and some good ideas about those. So we're going to look into those a little bit further. But I just didn't want it to be ignored that that was on open mic a couple of weeks ago. We didn't write the report, but we have met with her subsequently.
Okay. All right, other business? Did you have your hand up, or were you just letting me know that there's a hand up?
I figured you were going to talk about night-to-night, your honor.
I kind of figured I'd fill in wherever, whatever didn't get covered. So, yeah, extremely successful night-to-night party last night. What... How many parties did we have? 100 and...
I think the final number was 116. And roughly 2,400 residents sat on the event last night, so it was a big success. Always wanted to make it bigger. It's a great event. Getting to know your neighbors is the best way to keep your community safe.
It's just so awesome, the police and fire visiting everybody, and the kids just love it, the neighbors love it, and... No, it was a fabulous event.
It was great. I had the opportunity to ride with some of the... I think some of them are out of Station 1, but we ran out of Station 3 and had a great time, went to 11 or 12 parties, and it was great to see the interaction and all of the people at the parties. It was great.
So out of one of my night-to-night parties that I visited last night, there came a couple of things. And one is, as soon as we've got more information about the North Star Transit development up there, there's neighbors that are pretty anxious to find out what's going on. And as soon as we feel we've got enough to actually have some sort of a public open house to let them share their concerns and learn more about the project, that would be great. And with or without that project, they still have a lot of concerns with looking for traffic controls. They have a lot of issues getting out of 123rd Avenue there on the Northdale and even in the south end, because it's right around the corner on Northdale. I don't recall which street that is.
21st.
21st. And I was just wondering if there's ever been any traffic studies done? And that's one of the questions they're going to be wondering about the new complex is, just like Councilwoman Clint has brought up previously, the traffic controls, how was the traffic going to move? So, Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor Cook and councilmembers, just real quickly on that, and Grant, feel free to fill in any gaps I missed. We've heard some of those similar concerns at some of the city meetings, and Grant and his staff are working on updating some of the information that's on our website and other literature to provide some of that. We have talked about the potential for an open house to start to answer some of these questions. In regard to traffic, that would be certainly a key concern on the city's standpoint with that development, require traffic study and that sort of information before we would move forward. So I think those would be critical aspects. Generally, I've heard a lot of questions, too, just about the size and scope and use and things that are going on there. So we're going to try to get more information out there in those forums, but I don't know, Grant, if there's anything else beyond that.
Yeah, we, in fact, tonight, our website was updated. So there is newer information on our website, including the concept plan that we had out at the various neighborhood meetings. So there's more current information out there, but we definitely have had conversations with the developer about having some kind of a neighborhood meeting where people can, you know, learn more about the project. So we need to work with them to try and schedule something this fall.
Yeah, because some architectural drawings would really be nice with some scaling. Because almost everybody I've talked to, and myself included, looks at those beautiful River North apartments over there next to the ICE Center and went, oh, my gosh, those are big. Those are a lot bigger than I ever anticipated. And we're talking about almost 100 more units here in Phase 1. So it would be nice to get some scope and scale and some more information on that. Anybody else have anything else they want to mention from last night?
Well, I went around with the fire department, Chief Piper, and some firefighters out of Station 1. It was a wonderful night to be out. I wanted to say that I heard a lot of positive things, which actually was an improvement over last year, where I heard, you know, some frustrating things. But this year, I heard much more positive things. A lot of the things that I heard that were along the lines of kind of constructive criticism or complaints are things that I think could very easily be managed through the Report It feature on the city's website. And so I started during the process talking about that. And I think we could do a little bit more to educate our citizens on how to use that function, because you can put it on an app on a smartphone. You can upload pictures of the problem to the city. So I think it's a wonderful tool. I think it's something that we should encourage citizens to use. And I think we just need to get the word out a little bit more, and that's just a matter of time. So I thought it was a good night out and heard some good things, which made me happy.
I have a good thing I don't know if you're going to bring it up, but remind people that next Tuesday to get out the boat. On primaries in several wards.
And if they don't think they can get out on Tuesday, the city hall is open every day this week, and it'll only be open Saturday, right?
That's correct. It'll be open Saturday here at St. Alphara's, and it's going to be open from 10 to 3.
All right. Any other business? We must be winding down the concerts in the park. One or two left?
One is big and one next.
Two left. And then we've got a movie in the park coming up. August 6th.
26. I think it's 26.
26, thank you. That'd be like this week.
One more meeting in the park, too.
So we got a meeting in between there. Another meeting in the park. All right. No other business? For motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. All in favor, send by by saying aye.
Aye.
To adjourn.